By the United States of America. And to the people of this nation. For the creation of our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, would you call over please?
Tom?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
John?
Here.
Bruce?
Okay, we have a forum. The minutes from the September 18 meeting in 2012 were sent to you via email. They're also here in front of you. I trust you had a chance to read them. And I want to know whether or not they meet your approval or if there are corrections or additions.
Make a motion, we accept the amendments as per sound.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. I don't believe Hatachi is here yet, so I'm going to have the project with the chair and rearrange our agenda here just a little bit. And let's begin with the introduction of Menards Site Plan. I believe we have gentlemen here.
Yep.
Please come forward.
I'm Colin Airfong, I'm also at Menards Incorporated from O'Fallon, Wisconsin. Somebody already has, so I see.
I might get a second when you're on the team.
Certainly, certainly.
I don't know if John has one or not.
Well, we appreciate you letting us talk tonight. As Tom mentioned earlier, Menards Incorporated is a home improvement store. I'm sure most of you have heard. We have a few stores up in Indianapolis area. The site we're looking at is just south I-74 to east of the Walmart store, north of East Freeland Road. The current zoning of that property is white industrial. Our proposal, again, tonight is just an informal note, we just wanted to get plenty of early, we'll be back next month to discuss further, but we're proposing that we would prezone that property to B3 Heavy Commercial District. Within the Greensburg zoning code, we found that it matches that of a home improvement store, lumber sales, hardware, electrical, and so on and so forth. We also feel that it also complies with the comprehensive plan, the 2025, which somebody already looking at and very backed at, to be commercial district in that area.
So you're presenting tonight FYI that we're going, you're asking to change zoning, which seems to be in keeping with the other areas around it and so forth. You have a plan of sorts here. Is there anything you'd like for us just to, as introduction now that you?
Sure, certainly. You have your 11 by 17, I can pull this up as well. The general layout of Menards Store as depicted there. Around about 480 feet across the front facade, 330 feet back, with an extension of 50 foot off the back of the store. 60 foot off, as the site plan shows, off the east side of the store for garden center. 50 foot off the rear is shipping receiving. Warehouse, approximate size 80 by 500, somewhere in there. It's open area drive-through for lumber selection. Wrapped around with a treated fence to enclose the entire site, the entire yard. Two outlets out front along East Freeland Road, a third one at the end of the extension of Montgomery. Parking lot. That's kind of the general layout, obviously. Can I sit back down there? Once we, once we get all the survey work done and completed, we have that all set up that's going currently. We may make some minor adjustments, but that's what we see, that's best on that site.
So you're looking at an extension of the highway then through into the site to access the block that's in the east side there?
That's already there. The extension would be back to the west there into the parking lot off Montgomery. And then another access on the south side, the southwest corner. And that would be where most of the delivery heavy traffic would be as the entrance into the yard.
And then just further to the east is Ask Place.
Yes.
Already, that takes up the rest of that property from there to the point. Questions? Again, it's not an official site plan that we're looking at, but conceptually, any questions I would be good before they move into more development of the site.
Further input then. Something we want to fit into your community and be a fit for both of us. The second page on there is the start of a proposed landscape plan to conform with the landscape requirements of Greensburg. We're not very predictive at this point. We didn't get a whole lot completed on that, but that's just the beginning of that, is what that's showing.
What you're, what you're showing here is actually two access points into Menards.
One along the east side and one along the west side. Both coming in from south.
Members have other questions? Well, just a couple of comments. Obviously, it does seem appropriate. It fits in with the nature of what's there, for the most part, cutting up with an R4 and B3 there already, so making that adjustment seems reasonable and illogical. And the nature of your business next to, that kind of business next to the highway seems good for everybody too, probably.
Pay attention, brain and much outside.
Okay, well, we, any other things you want to ask or provide as far as a way of information direction?
Just one question, at what point is the traffic load in the Freeland Road becoming a problem?
It's a good question, and we are part of the engineering of the project. We do intend to widen Freeland Road to a three lane, so you're turning like. Yep. From, from where Walmart ended, their, their three lane extension.
Just continue.
Continue that on now to the program.
That would be important.
Yeah.
In order for the site plan to be really viable. Much needed. Okay, I'm gonna have to go back out there and look again. I didn't realize that Montgomery Road already extended into that property very far.
Yeah.
I just haven't been out there for long. Well, you would know that better than I. I'll have to, that's, that's good. All right, well, I don't know if there's anything else. Thank you. We look forward to next month and seeing the actual plans.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let's see, Gary, again, in keeping with my, you know, I'm not here to do that either. Okay, well, gentlemen, let's and ladies, let's move right to our site ordinance discussion then. Hatachi Powdered Metals have a, does have a site plan there, hoping to begin as soon as possible, so I'm surprised that they're not here. And I'm trusting that Gary is trying to locate them, get them here. At this point in time, we will skip over to signs. At last we met, perhaps, we were partway through our revised sign ordinance. And I'd ask you again, let's just pick up from, from that point. So if you could get your draft ordinance, I hope you brought it, and have done your homework, so to speak. I think the last place we left off, we were, had finished discussion of the section called prohibited location. It's paged in our number, so I can't give you exact place, but it begins with specific limitations. That's where we were last left off. And in keeping with what we have have done in the past, let's just begin with that. Lighting in color. Had any questions about, about that? And Sean, I'm gonna involve you in the discussion as well. When I looked at that, one question I had is there, is that definition fit the business language of today, more or less?
I think it covers everybody, yes.
Okay. You know, it seemed to be clear to me, but I didn't know if we need more technical definition. Illuminated lights. We've got a, what we call illuminated lights. Sean has, in his definitions, electronic message centers. And I don't know, do we have electronic message centers later in this?
Yes.
Definition? I thought we did, too.
Yes.
Yeah, we do, near the very end of it, so I'm gonna ask a question for my benefit, I don't know if the rest of them, but what is the difference between, and I guess there are differences, between illuminated signs and electronic message centers?
They're both illuminated. The difference, internally illuminated or illuminated sign is just like a light, like the ceiling lights here, where you have light inside or outside on it. LED sign has multiple lights that work together to create an image.
Mike, another question I have in terms of location or placement of, I suppose what we need is both illuminated signs and electronic message center definitions in the, in the ordinance. And so a question of location, do we want to have this illuminated signs, we're good with that definition, do we need to then also begin discussing the issue of electronic message centers? And do they need, does that need to be in the same location? Well, what we got is electronic changeable copy signs, electronic message center. I guess that's, we're trying, that's the same definition we're talking about, right? All right, let's just leave, leave that where it is, and we'll get to that point. We'll come back to that question of where it needs to be placed within the ordinance at another point in time. Any further questions on illuminated signs? John?
Where it says no light shall shine directly onto adjacent property, the light from any illuminated sign shall not associated shielded or directed, that light intensity or brightness will not be objectionable to the surrounding areas. I think that's gonna be a challenge to hold up. I mean, I see the point for putting it in there, but you could drive around almost every lot in town, and then where a sign's on the edge of the lot, you're gonna see some sign light on the property beside it. I can see the point, but it's gonna be a real challenge to, to hold up.
Mission members, you understand?
Yeah, I understand his concern. I'm not sure that he's not right. Maybe we want to?
Wasn't the intent, of course, there's more nation-wide areas that should be attempted before we work for a light that could not be focused and shining directly towards a property.
What do you guys have under, Gary, under your light poles? How'd you get around it for light, parking lot light poles?
There is a foot candle limit at the property lines.
So it allows some overflow, but it minimizes it.
There's a definition of actually how much candle power you can have at the edge of your property, right? If I remember right. So, I don't know, maybe we want to incorporate that language here or reference that?
That gets very technical. And I, and I see the, I see the reason for trying to do that on the one hand. On the other hand, and I agree that trying to, trying to enforce this can be difficult, but it will come down to a judgment. That's obviously gonna come down to a judgment.
You can get a light meter, and you can measure foot candle limits with a light meter.
What would that, what would be a reasonable light meter or foot candle reading that would, in terms of over, overflow or whatever you call it, overshooting the sign?
It depends on your locate, you know, your locations. Again, you've got green space buffers and stuff in your ordinance now, so you're, you're really, parking lot lighting is not necessarily as close to the property line as you might allow signage now. So typically, it's somewhere between .1 and .5 foot candles at the property line, but that may be more difficult to achieve with signage than parking lot lighting, because you could, you could do down lighting, you could put back shields and other things.
You can direct parking lot lighting there.
And again, my, that's, my point here is that, so to Kevin's point, where he's saying no light shall directly shine onto adjacent property. And the light intensity or brightness will not be objectionable to surrounding areas. Now, maybe we can say another qualifier there, unreasonably is objectionable or, I mean, I, I think what we're trying to get at here is trying to find a way to give good direction and yet give some flexibility or reasonable allowance for people to have signs and illuminate them, where they?
The idea, I think originally came from the idea that we didn't want a business to shine a light directly at another area or a residential area that it might bump up against, you know, just purposely point a light at that.
Well, I think we're also looking at the electronic message centers and how bright they are, if they're, because typically, you're either internally illuminated with a sign, or you shine a light up on the sign, and it's not focused toward a special area, you know, away from the property.
Correct.
But that gets to be a little more difficult to do when you have electronic message centers.
About the only, Gary may have a different thought, but about the only time I've heard complaints is residential. We put a, on our definitions, we did add that in about electronic message centers being next to a residential and having a buffer between. And also, electronic message centers having a photo cell or a timer on it that knows when to adjust the light.
So it adjusts for night and day. It's, it's already in there, fundamentally.
And I think that gives the city a good backbone to, you know, if you had an issue, you have, have it in there to back you up.
Let's, unless we've got, unless we've come to some consensus right now about whether we want to go like, footlight candles, where it was called, at the property line, or we leave it like this. I don't know what, I had many other comments on it, but... Kevin, were you thinking that what was here was sufficient?
Because I was gonna think, just take the second pair of sentences off, no lights shall shine directly onto adjacent property. It was externally illuminates, you know, light picture shiny on a sign, you know, it couldn't be adjusted where it was shining on some other property.
I want all my neighbors' lights shining on our property, you know, you're in business to be lit up.
At your house, you're business. You'll get no sign, you'll get no light.
I wish I had the property next to me, it's commercial, to make my residential work more.
I see what you're saying, but at the same time, I think what we're trying to do is not make it unreasonable that there's no, somebody says, well, there's a shadow over here now, and there's light, so... Let's just keep that as a point that we need to come back to, think about it, and we're gonna, we're not gonna finish tonight necessarily. Electrical wiring kind of seems pretty straightforward, I guess, everybody? Maintenance? Pretty straightforward? John?
The landscaping portion of that, is it mandatory, I don't believe it is, to have landscaping with your sign? Why, why's the landscaping in there? I don't even think that you guys mandate that to put up a building or a, or a house, do you?
If landscaping is required, maybe if the landscaping is included around the base of your sign. So somebody might include landscaping around the base of their sign as part of their own property development, correct?
Yeah.
So should I say not required, but included? Shouldn't it, if it read, if landscaping was included, isn't, what we, the point is to not let it get trashy. If you've got landscaping with your sign, to not let it get trashy.
Well, the city better clean up their signs, because the landscaping looks trashy.
Yeah.
And who's gonna place this stuff? I mean, are we spending a dime to save a nickel here? That's a question I had, is what's the consequence if they don't? I think if you're gonna have that in there, then you need to have a clear consequence in order to violate.
It's probably better to leave it out.
I mean, you could always add it if it's an issue, you know, you start to see a jungle ramp down, but...
Well, you got other ordinances that cover that, in a sense.
So, other comments?
Because nobody, yeah, nobody's gonna, you're, you're right, Tom's right about policing it. And we've got the general cleanup ordinances of the city about as far as if you're?
If it's unkept.
Yeah, if you got unkept property.
Yeah, that's, okay, okay, so we're agreeing that we're striking that last sentence there, so all signs to be kept, good repair, safe, clean, working condition. Home occupational signs. The only, the only thing I would say here is that this section shall apply, only in zoning of two, three, and four, where they are permitted in our zoning coordinates, home occupations are allowed, one, two, and that, and signage is by variance only. So the only thing I would add here is that this section applies only following zoning districts as approved or when approved by VZA. I just make that clarification, so it's not like they're automatic, but upon approval, maybe upon approval by the VZA. Just would add that. In terms of the, the type of sign then, size of sign, ground sign or a wall sign, that's what we're looking at. Any comment there from members?
Where did those numbers come from?
Question?
If you're looking at what would came from us, it's the existing signs.
Yeah, this, this didn't change. This is, this is a carryover from what we have now.
It changed, probably four years ago.
Right, I mean, I mean, what?
It's what we currently have.
Right.
And again, in my, from my point of view, I think we want to keep it minimal, in terms of residential areas, what kind of thing. In terms of subdivisions and institutional signs, there is, there is a change. That's a different type of sign. We're looking here at home occupation sign only, so, right?
Well, and, and the one here that says the height of any freestanding institutional sign shall not exceed, is it six or eight feet? Because in here, we've got six.
Six, and then you got eight.
Which one is it? It's currently six.
Hey, yeah, that's...
There was a thought to allow it to possibly go to eight.
Because, so that's why the eight's in for season.
Okay, let's, let's get that, okay, Sean?
Back on home occupational signs, again, I think we should follow the charts of really what, the same charts that states follow and other people follow on what's legible and what's not, based on speed limit, amount of lanes, et cetera. Because, you know, if you think about it, you're messing with saying a person that runs a business out of their home versus a person that runs a business out of the commercial building. You're being selective on your enforcement, which is, one, illegal, and, two, you're getting on the freedom of speech, saying this one person can have a sign when people can read it, and this person has a sign.
In a residential area.
Being challenged to be legible. Just, I, I think it's on fine grounds of freedom of speech and selective enforcement.
Okay.
Talking about residential districts here, we've always had no problem enforcing what signage we allowed in a residential area for a home-based business. And I, I don't see that there's a problem at all with being more restrictive on that sign. If you want to move your business to a commercial area and be free to advertise as is allowed there, we're making an exception here. I mean, it says, you know, it says no home-based businesses till you come before the VZA, so we're making an exception. I don't, I don't see it as an issue.
Other comments or thoughts? You know, I looked at, I looked at your chart with, with the type of signage, size, distance, number of lanes, pass per hour, and so forth. And I think that has some, some application in business or commercial areas. I don't know that it has application in residential. I think we're, we are making a distinction about where, and people have certain expectations about where they live, because we, we don't allow any signs in R1, for example. Very restrictive there. And that's what people know when they buy there, and that's what they want. And same thing for R2 and 3 and 4. We made those exceptions, made those different categories to try and accommodate different types of environments, different kinds of living environments, and, and where they might be located in conjunction to other districts, zoning districts, businesses, industrial and so forth. So I'm, I'm not inclined to, I'm inclined to leave it very limited in terms I'm inclined to leave it very limited in terms of the home occupation, that should be a, a rare exception, if somebody has to have a home occupation, we don't want necessarily to draw a lot of traffic there anyway. And if they want a lot of traffic, they need to find another place where that's more suitable. So, points taken, and, and you're welcome to pursue convincing us otherwise, at this point in time, I think we're gonna, unless I hear otherwise, we're gonna leave it like it is. Subdivision signs then, moving down, on the next section there, I think it's pretty much all, again, like we've had at this point in time. Trying to provide for those same areas of R2, 3, and 4, and so forth, even in R1 where they've got a whole new sign that says this is, you know, wonderful living or whatever, we're gonna call the subdivision. An exception is made to allow for those kinds of signs. Any questions or, I mean, that's the purpose, as I understand it, correct? Sean?
I think the square feet and the height and the setback is excessive on being too restrictive.
And what would you, what are you proposing as to alternative?
I would base it on the speed limit, where it's at, how many lanes of traffic.
Well, okay. Most of our residential areas, we've got two lanes, maybe four in one spot out along, uh, 421. The most of them are two-lane roads, so, looking at that and looking at the size that we've got here, and looking at your chart. The difference is, we've got thirty-two feet as opposed to fifty, and, well. Six feet high as opposed to ten. And, you know, I don't know how much difference in sign, I mean, I know the difference between six and ten and thirty-two and fifty, but I don't know what we're talking about in terms of dimensions here exactly, how significant that is. Do you guys?
Still that same residential discussion.
Well, could be, yeah.
Subdivisions, I see more bear to that in the industrial, the institutional, the business, industrial sections.
I'm inclined to agree with you. Tom, or, John, anybody?
I, I agree with you, this, I mean, you don't need that big a sign, I don't think, for subdivision, you know, you're not, it's not like a retail business where you're trying to be customer-led. You are, but you're not, it's not an everyday thing, so.
You're just letting people know that, that you're there.
Yeah, we're here, you know, this is where to turn.
So, Mike?
Mike, remember.
So consensus is we're gonna leave this at this point as it is. Moving on to institutional signs, again, these, these are for, um, R1 as well as through the residential areas only. This is where we're restricting this, misscuseful sign, in a business would probably be governed by the business district. Sean?
Back on the subdivision signs, you know, it's a safety more than a personal feeling of being smaller, not, I mean, we all saw the safety program and we're going by facts rather than the personal feelings, and six foot tall is a safety issue, and your state signs say a minimum of seven foot to be visible. And again, the thirty-two square feet, I'd still recommend fifty for the sake of safety to be legible. And on top of that, if you go with a ten-foot setback, you're getting out of your visual triangle, allows you to be a silent, safe manner. And that makes it even more of a challenge on having smaller signs when you have to set off property line ten foot.
Well, thirty-two feet is like four by eight, right? Okay, I'm gonna ask a question then, and, you make a point, we've kind of come to a consensus, but I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Give you the time that we're gonna do this now rather than do it later. Okay? Thirty-two feet's like, what, four by eight, right? My question now is, the sign that's at Mill Ridge, how big is it? How tall is it? I know it's bigger than four by eight.
That's what I was saying.
Pretty much, I'm, I'm not mechanical, but I, but I know that that's bigger than four by eight. Height-wise.
Six by twelve, at least.
That's seventy-two, sorry.
And, and is it, is it six foot higher or taller?
It's probably about six feet, yes.
Maybe it's, it's taller.
It's at least six.
At least, yes.
Well, can I make, I mean, if the state requires seven foot, then we go seven foot.
That's to the bottom.
Bottom of what'd you say?
That's to the bottom of, minimum of seven foot to the bottom of the sign, for state regulations.
On highway signs, or, or on?
Any, any state sign, your stop sign, your handicap sign, state signs.
Cause that's a little bit different than a, a sign announcing a subdivision.
But I still, I see the point from, from, on his side here, is that if you're from out of town, if you're coming to the subdivision, it can present a problem if you're not familiar with the area. So I do, I guess I can agree on that point, it's not just for the residents of the town, it's for out-of-town traffic as well. And I've been to places where it seems the signs are too small, and then you go past, and then you turn around, then you do it, you know, you make a quick decision, and you. So, I, I guess there's a lot of merit to that, Sean, and I, I would say that, thinking in personal experience, and using fact, just to back it, then I guess eight feet's probably not out of line.
Square footage larger, fifty?
Fifty, which is, I mean, I don't think you're getting out of, out of line by going fifty.
Royce, do you have any?
I mean, if we've got fifty, we're, we're looking five by ten, or. And that's maximum, things can be less than that.
Sure.
Depending upon site planner, the case.
That fits under these numbers. Fifty fits in with the, that's what I was gonna ask, what fits in with the numbers?
Fifty is, the number that Sean has, maximum height of ten, and a square, maximum square footage of fifty. On residential, if we land on.
Well, this was institutional, correct?
But, but this is, we're in a residential area, basically.
We're backed up to.
Yeah.
So, what's the numbers say, Sean, fifty square feet and eight feet high, is that what the number?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten feet for thirty, thirty, thirty-five mile an hour traffic.
Okay, which is what you'd expect in a, in a, in that area, okay. Well, if that's what the numbers say, why don't we go, I mean, I don't have a problem going with that. Cause I, I'm like Blake, I have been to places where you don't know where you're going, and you hate driving by, and your wife or whatever, significant other goes, hey dummy, there it was.
Yeah. Then you make a rash decision.
Yeah, then you make a decision, make whether I wanna make a U, see any cops, I'm making a U or whatever, which is probably not the best, but.
Okay, so, are we reversing that consensus now, we're saying that we're at fifty square feet maximum, is not be over fifty square feet in area and not exceed ten feet in height?
Yeah, I can go there.
All right.
What the numbers say, I mean, I didn't.
Okay.
Chart says eight, which one do we look at?
Well, it does say ten, this one here says ten.
It's the residential, though, is that residential?
See, right here's family residential.
Mm-hmm.
And it's got two lanes, thirty-five miles.
And that wasn't earlier when, the latter one I got from Sean had ten.
Eight would be satisfactory.
And I can go either way, I don't.
That's it, there was multiple things to throw out.
Right, I, I agree.
Well, Sean corrected one, eight is better than six.
Sure.
I mean, it gives you a foot taller than what's recommended, which could still be challenging.
No higher than eight feet? Eight seems more reasonable than ten to me, but I, again, I'm, I'm going on.
And eight and fifty, still eight and fifty?
I, I would back that up if we get it down to zero setback, I mean, the setbacks are in the city's control anyway, and they keep getting wider. City of Columbus, zero, zero foot setback, you put a sign up to, a lot of cities are that way. Because the further you get that sign away from the road, realistically, the larger the sign has to be.
And we're out of the right of way anyway, so we're not worried about that.
So we're saying a minimum of ten feet from the right of way, unless integrated into a median, not interfere with the site clearance of an intersection. Do we, are we, again, we're looking at subdivision signs, apartment, multifamily identification signs.
Correct.
Does that need to be backed ten feet from the right of way? That's what Sean's asking?
It's a safety concern.
Yeah, I'd say that, I don't see why that needs to be backed ten foot from the right of way, we get.
Out of the right of way. What is the, what is the, what is the distance then, is the right distance?
Well, that's what, out of the right of way.
It'd be zero, it'd be zero feet as far as the setback is what we'd be saying. Because the right of way would be taken into account already, so it wouldn't be in the right of way.
Correct, and then the city's backed up from the, with the visual triangle, which is later in this, so if you get next to entrance or exit.
Right, you're covered, I mean.
You're covered as well, you know, even if you're against the right of way, you guys have that visual triangle, you put over a placemat that keeps the sign back far enough for people to safely pull in and out.
So fifty square feet, ten feet in height.
Hey, we're going to eight.
Eight feet.
Yeah.
And then right over the back, flipping back.
Zero, zero setback, out of the right. But out, but that, the other language keeps it out of the right of way.
Okay. Well, then, that's gotta be restated, we're not gonna, should be located. Well, we're already safe, signs are put in the right of way, so we can strike that, we'll.
Right, we can leave that out, you don't need that in there, because we already covered that.
Let's, we'll res, we'll strike, but on pending review here, if we need to say something, there we can. We may have to have someone coming back on that. Institutional signs, are we ready to go to institutional sign?
Yes.
Before I do that, let's just get a couple of things out of the way here. Do we know if Hitachi is coming?
They are planning on getting somebody here.
Good.
They talked to supervisor over there, we have talked to their engineers, and apparently they didn't bring the information back to the local folks, that they needed to be here tonight.
Okay. It was my intention to try and end here roughly around nine-ish, again. But I, I may hold, if we have to hold, get them here, I'd like to get them and get it out of the way if we can. So, I wanna work through this, and we'll do an update on the unsafe building piece, and that's all we really have on tonight, so. Is that okay with everybody, Sashback RE? Very good. Institutional signs then. Questions about this? Going, looking at this again. We've got the same question, I'm just gonna go back down from the bottom bullet, it's got signs should be located minimum ten feet from right of way, or we, are we?
I would say that we're gonna do the same thing, Sean, wouldn't you agree, we'd wanna do the same thing here we just did?
Yeah, it's twenty-five, thirty mile an hour, which most of our.
We assume that in a residential neighborhood, an institutional sign?
Yeah, I think it's very fair, I mean, the, the high school sign, what do you think that is, Tom?
Six by twelve, probably with the brick and everything on it, it's probably about seven foot tall.
So, I mean, I, I would say that we just, the verbiage here would reflect what we just talked about.
I think it covers, covers the city.
Okay, so we're striking that last line.
And making your numbers match what we just talked about, zero setback and.
Fifty?
Yeah. Fifty and eight.
Wall sign, we've got a wall sign there too, that seems to be, be good. And we got wall sign, John, it exceeds one and one-half, we, I think we need to finish that, what? I need to clarify, one and one-half, what?
Take the, the building, how long, how wide the building is, if it's a hundred feet, multiply by one point five, sixty, hundred and fifty square feet, you cap it by being seventy by square foot max. Right, Sean?
I'm sorry, it wasn't.
I mean, it's basic, you get a fifty-foot wide building, one point five times that's seventy-five square feet.
Correct.
If it's a forty-foot wide building, one point five would be sixty square feet.
And you're making a challenge, yes.
Okay, so the, the wall sign, John, it exceeds one and one-half square feet, we need to put in there then, that's what's not there.
You wanna have times in, in every, yeah.
One and one-half times in area?
Yeah, for each linear foot.
Okay.
So I think that covers.
With a cap of seventy-five square, with a box of seventy-five square feet.
Gotcha, so, one of them have times in area. We good to go there? John?
While you're on that, I noticed later on that whoever disagreed to put, allow a wall sign per street fringe, so if it's on the corner, it would allow one sign per street fringe to identify the building. It's in for the commercial buildings to be that way.
I mean, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, so we need to add in the.
If you're on two street, street corner, I guess it'd be street corner.
Well, we'll, we'll get into the commercial, we'll just add the commercial language. All right? Okay, business and industrial, applying to B2, 3, 1, and I1 and I2. Note that our B1 really is downtown area, so that's why that's exempted, it's a different, it's not a kettle of fish, so to speak. Everybody understand that?
That's historical.
Well, part of it's historical, part of it's not. The B1 is, yeah, it's, it, it has historical district within it, but B1 is, is larger, so, here we go. Moving on down the line here with freestanding buildings. This is, the expectations on this are not exceed eight feet in height, ground signs permitted, ten feet off the property line, I guess that's. And vision clearance triangle and so forth, wall signs are defined there. Menu signs, time and temperature sign. We wanna take line by line?
Well, the one we got there, not exceed eight feet in height, since now we're in a different category, you could have a different speed limit. So we would wanna reference the chart on signs and speed limit there, cause industrial and B3, B2 might not be in a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, they could be in a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Hmm, we might have, I don't know where we got, we don't have any fifty-five. We might have, I don't know where we got, we don't have any 55s. We don't have any 55s in, in...
I'm trying to think that.
We do have 45.
Right. You agree that this, yeah, this should be, don't you agree this should have the, the, the verbiage here on the size should depend on the speed limit? Especially looking to the future?
Yeah, it'd be very easy on everybody.
If we just went with that. I mean, it wouldn't change that much for the people that are in the 25 mile an hour speed limit area.
No, it's pretty strict on that.
But if you get, as we get out with the area out by Honda and now 421 going...
Honda has like eight foot tall letters on their building. And Valleyo has a 14 foot tall sign on back of their building.
Hopefully, we're going to meet some development going on out that way, so.
Okay, looking at the sign, the zoning districts, if you got the B, lose B1 here, because that's a separate... B2, and they've got lanes and multiple lanes and so forth. Again, other than on the highway, we've got 45 mile an hour limits out there along 421. I don't know any place in town where we have 55 mile an hour speed limit. So I'm, I'm comfortable saying we might use these, the minimum, the maximum square footage and the maximum sizes...